Good evening. I would like to welcome you to tonight's Austin City Planning Commission meeting. Welcome, Commissioners. Have you had an opportunity to review the minutes from last month's meeting?
I'll move to approve.
Oh, I don't have... Okay, hang on. I used to guess someone. What is muted?
Oops.
Um... Yes, and we have some conversation. And might have to check this other computer. Everybody's muted for some reason.
Everybody's dead, why?
Everybody's muted for some reason.
For those attending via Zoom, can you hear us?
No, we can't.
Okay. No. Holly, should we start this over?
Yes.
Okay. Well, welcome everyone to tonight's Planning Commission meeting. Welcome, Commissioners. I'm wondering if you have all had an opportunity to review the minutes from last month's meeting? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from last month's meeting?
I'll move to approve.
So moved.
Jay, do you want to second that?
I'll second.
Okay. A motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes from last month's meeting. Who was the motion? I'm sorry, I didn't catch who that was.
Yes.
Uh, I believe it was Commissioner Lindberg.
Uh, Commissioner Lindberg.
Okay, great, thank you. So, um, we'll start with a roll call. Commissioner Lindberg.
Here.
Oh, I'm s... Sorry.
Proving them in.
Um, let's vote on the minutes from last month's meeting. We had a motion by Commissioner Lindberg and a second by Commissioner Lutz. We'll start with our roll call. Commissioner Lindberg. Vote.
Aye.
Commissioner Lutz.
Aye.
Commissioner Salas Ramirez.
Aye.
Commissioner Norman.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrock.
Aye.
Commissioner Connor.
Aye.
With the unanimous vote of aye, motion carries. Third time's a charm, right? So, if we would like to get started with our first agenda item, which is the preliminary plat for Nature Ridge 3rd subdivision. Holly, do you want to take it away and get us updated on that?
Actually, um, I think we have the rezone.
Yeah, that's second, actually, on the agenda. Yeah. No, the rezone is first, you're right. The Nature's Ridge is second.
It doesn't put the backup materials or what?
Okay, so, while I'm batting a thousand tonight. Okay, so Holly, can you explain the rezone, please, for us?
Yes, so I just need to scroll down here to our rezone backup material. Let it catch up here a bit. All right, so this petition or this application was brought by KO Management LLC at 1307 Second Avenue North, Minneapolis, Minnesota. The location of the property is between 1204 and 1300, 10th Drive Southeast. The petitioner is requesting to rezon this property from an R1 single-family residence, residential district to an I1 limited industrial district and to amend the future land use plan from low-density residential to industrial. The land presently is used for crops. It's rented from a family who has a trust. The property was annexed into the city as R1, single-family residential, because it's most restrictive zoning district. The surrounding uses have rezoned to light, industrial, or commercial. The petitioner wishes to develop and use their property for mini-storage, and they have included a site plan for that. And I'll... Let's see, pull that up here. Oops. We got lots of info on here. Okay, this is the site plan that's proposed, showing the mini-storage structures and then the paving, and they've identified, uh, a wetland and accounted for that on the property, and then also some landscaping in the area. The future land use map shows this area is in the box here, the square, and was indicated as open space or low-density residential or the surrounding area. There's one little area of industrial marked here in our future land use plan, and then this area is a mixed-use designation. This is actually in the county, and this site is mostly in the city. Here, the dash line shows the boundaries, but that's changed a little. There's at least one property additionally annexed in there. This is just a zoning map for reference. This kind of shows a little more in detail about what's in the area adjacent. Oops. So it didn't show this on the future land use map because it hadn't been annexed at the time, but Midtown Auto Repair and Al-Anon have annexed into the city, and they are annexed in as I1 and commercial, B2. The... This area is not annexed, it's just storage, which is, they don't need access to city sewer, which is why they don't want to annex in it at this time. It would just be additional tax cost for them. And then the towing company here, or former towing company, the printing company, I1, they're all light industrial. All of these are light industrial. And north of this proposed site is Patterson's, which Mr. Patterson is here in the audience, and his property is Zone B2, and he uses that for his business and his home. The things that you should keep in mind when considering rezone are, and I'll just go through the list, the consistency of the proposed zoning with the goals, policies, and future land use map of the comprehensive plan, the compatibility of the site with the uses permitted in the proposed zoning district, the compatibility of all the potential uses allowed in the proposed zoning district with the surrounding uses and zoning in terms of land suitability, impacts on the environment, density, nature of use, traffic impacts, aesthetics, infrastructure, and potential influence on property values, the capacity of existing infrastructure and services sufficient to accommodate the uses permitted in the requested district without compromising the health, safety, and welfare of the residents, whether the uses permitted in the proposed zoning district will cause detrimental environmental impacts, the boundaries of the requested zoning district are sufficient to meet the dimensions, regulations for the proposed zoning district, and ability to satisfy any requirement applicable to the specific use imposed pursuant to zoning and land use regulation. In this, let's see, additional information, I1's district allowed uses are compatible with the surrounding uses, the comprehensive plan. Future land use map shows just one area to the south as industrial. The area was annexed, again, with most of the businesses pre-existing, and that were later rezoned one by one over many years to commercial and industrial to match their actual use. And our code update proposes self-storage as permitted use in I1. Other applicable comprehensive plan provisions relating to this requested action include the attached sections in the backup material, which is just actually the future land use map and current zoning map. Let's see. Oops, getting too far. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, Holly, I have a question. I was looking at the code the last couple of days to try and determine what is the minimum zone requirement currently for a, what we call, self-storage? I couldn't find it anyplace.
The... You mean for the...
For anyone that wants to open a self-storage facility like this, what does the current property have to be zoned to qualify? Is... Do we consider that warehousing and storage that's mentioned in some of the other? I'm wondering why the request is for I1 if in fact you could put a storage facility in a B1, for example?
Well, the B2, we required a conditional use permit.
Okay.
In the I1, we would allow it as permitted use.
So in the B2, it's allowed, but they need a conditional use, you're saying? Is that right?
Well, we have, yeah. Correct.
I didn't see that, so...
So it would be similar to the one that we have out on Oakland, and KO also well had previously bought that from Packer Storage.
I know there's one over by Packer Arena, too.
That one I don't know.
And that's B2, that block.
Packer Arena?
Yeah, just east of Packer Arena.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that.
Right up the street there from Reed's Market? There's a... One of those mini-storage places right there on that block.
No, I haven't seen it.
Yeah.
I'll have to check it out.
So you mentioned in the staff notes that the new update of the code is going to put it in as I1?
Yes.
So is that going to be... So I1 will be required then to have self-storage going forward? Is that...
Correct. It'll be... It'll be more obvious than it is in the current code.
Okay.
Which we've had discussions about that.
It seems pretty strong for self-storage. I mean, it doesn't seem to be too disruptive or too...
You mean the I district?
Yeah, being an I1.
Yeah, well, that's something that you can toss around because we'll bring the update to the Planning Commission. We've added a use table, so it'll be easier to identify, you know, all of the things that are allowed, you know, permitted under each category, as well as things that require a conditional use. And so then, yeah, you can go around... You can go through those and make some, you know, recommendations, I guess. If some seem like they're out of place or maybe that they should be more broadly allowed, you know, or maybe more narrowly allowed, depending on what the use is.
Right.
So we, as staff, have gone through, and I've just sent it over to Byram's, Mr. Byram's office, to take a look at. But just making our best judgment, you know, based on what the current economic, uh, I guess, climate is and things that we've seen in the community, tending to go with, you know, whatever direction. Like, mixed-use now is more common than it had been in the past, you know, where you might have, like, an apartment building with maybe like some kind of, you know, a bank or something or a, you know, eating establishment or... Not sure if we'd ever have something like that in Austin, but there are instances where it'd be nice to make that more clear, you know, rather than say, well, it's just in a B2 so you can have residential and commercial uses. But it doesn't really necessarily say they can be mixed, but both are allowed. I mean, under our current zoning scheme. But I guess back to the... The matter at hand. Do you have any other questions about...
This is Craig Byram, for those on Zoom. If I'm speaking to Commissioner Lutz's question about whether there's a less intense zoning that might work with a mini-storage facility, I certainly understand why you'd be asking that. What I would point out, I wasn't really involved in the policy decision on which application to put in front of you, but as noted in the backup materials and the presentation, this area that didn't have necessarily a clean future plan 10, 20 years ago has continuously sort of property by property moved towards I1 designation. And now that seems to be kind of where that... What is it, 10th Drive Northwest? That...
Southeast.
Southeast, I mean, yes, 10th Drive. Kind of where that area is going. And so in that regard, there's a consistency to continue to keep those together in a contiguous, you know, group of similarly-zoned properties. If you went to a business, a B classification, it would be the only one. And other uses out there would be consistent with that classification, but other zoning classifications in the surrounding area aren't consistent with that. So you would limit it to just be mini-storage and those things that are available in the B2 designation, where the neighbors have I1 designations or I2 designations, and they would be having a broader scope of possible uses. You might create conflict over a long period of time with that. Those are my only comments to that.
And I think the, you know, like, the commercial districts are more geared towards retail, you know, versus, you know, more, you know, the industrial areas under the purpose. You know, it says, it doesn't read very well. So we're also correcting some of the language.
The neighboring property, though, next door to the north, is that not still B2?
Yeah, it is, because they have a residence. So when Mr. Patterson rezoned his property, he couldn't do I1 because right now we don't allow residential in the I1 district.
Right.
So in order to live and work at, you know, on the same property, that was the best zoning designation for him. Like, we were just talking about the mixed-use idea.
Right. So that one's just kind of stuck at B2 because of the residential piece, but the rest of all...
It could fit as I1 with, you know, with the business, but yeah, not with the house.
Okay.
Or residence.
And a B2 can serve as a buffer between residential that's further north and the industrial that's further south. And so if there's B2 right next door, you could expand that buffer.
Yep.
Yeah, as you say, a less intensive use. Although, I mean, we do... So we do have a representative from KO here, if you have any questions for him about what, you know, what the general intensity of uses, maybe. But I don't know if you've been past the... You've probably been past the location on Oakland, I'm guessing. I think I've seen people out there, maybe only a couple of times, it was fenced and had security. I think a gate that required a code to get in. Yeah, I don't know if you have any questions along those lines. And then Mr. Patterson, I don't know if he has anything that he wants to say.
Oh, just the only question I have is wildlife funneling. If that's an area of a little bit more wildlife here, stuff like that running through across the street. That's that, uh...
Um, actually, can you... Can you go up to the podium? Podium and give your name and address, for the record?
David C. Patterson, next-door neighbor, 1204, 10th Drive Southeast. Only question I have is on wildlife funneling. If you fence the whole area off, then I get more deer and stuff like that through my yard and kind of blocks them. So I was wondering what they're going to do for a fence, for security and stuff like that. That's about it. And then, of course, lighting, I don't want it shining in my bedroom window, you know, stuff like that. Otherwise, I have no objection to mini-storage. Just that has to be livable for me, or hopefully it would be, you know, as far as that goes. That's about it.
Does a representative from KO want to speak to that and potentially answer his questions?
Yeah, so thank you guys for having me. We're very excited about this project. And just to address his questions first, we are proposing to have perimeter fencing surrounding the site. Along that, along his property line, we will have probably six-foot chain-link fencing, potentially with the angled barbed wire on the top. We've noticed that that is a little bit more of a deterrent to unruly activities that have been associated with self-storage facilities in the past. And the lighting that we're using, the light packs are fixated either at the end, on the emphasis of the buildings, or within certain, I guess, chunks of the building. And the one that's abutting his property, that 20-by-430-foot building, that one will not have lighting on the rear. So I don't... I do not believe there will be any lights that will be kind of like disrupting, you know, shining into his bedroom window or kitchen or anything like that. So I believe those were the two questions that the neighbor asked. Is that... Did I address those?
Could you be a little more specific on the lighting?
Uh, yeah, the light packs that we use, we tend to use these in areas that abut agricultural uses. These have a very short cone, and they do not spread out the light because we've noticed that some of our neighbors who have abutting agricultural uses, if we mount those lights any higher than the top of the facade of the building, sometimes soybeans don't grow or they mature too quickly, which yields unfavorable results for the farmer's crop. I... The typical light packs are hard-wired in through the facility, and they're usually mounted. These, no higher than 13 feet tall, that's the tallest that our buildings are going to be, which the top eve is 13 feet, four inches tall. So with those light packs, just general LED bulbs that generally disperse light in a relatively small cone.
Okay, the only other question, and I'll state it again, is what about wildlife? Shooting on through. If you're going to fence it off, that means you're going to funnel it towards me. What are proposals to do about that?
So the fencing that we're using is actually... If you can see on the screen, it's cutting right along the rear of the pavement. So for that, we're keeping the wildlife out of our facility specifically and almost directing it south through the site or around both edges of the site into that wetland that's at the rear, the west of our facility. That's probably the best use for that. And as directing them, I... Just because they are wild animals, I can't really tell them where to walk through it. We can only deter them from coming into our facility and having the potential to get hurt. So that's kind of, I think, where we're best at. And they do have the... That area where they can move over and look for forage at the rear of our site.
Okay, does anybody else have any other questions?
This would be a recommendation to council. And this wouldn't go until June, the first June meeting, actually.
If we don't have any questions, do we have... Would anyone like to make a motion? Does anyone have any comments that they would like to share or add?
See, you're just looking for... You're just looking for a motion to send it to council, correct?
Yes, correct.
I guess I'm okay with moving it forward to council as long as Mr. Patterson's concerns were all taken into consideration.
Yeah, is that a... Yeah, could you make a recommend... Could one... Somebody make a recommendation to council to rezon from R1 to I1 and to amend the future land use map? That would be my recommendation. Be either a recommendation to approve the rezon or to deny the rezon.
I'll make a motion to approve the rezon.
I second that motion.
A motion's been made by Commissioner Norman and seconded by Commissioner Salas Ramirez to rezon property from R1 single-family residence to an I1 and to amend the future land use map as a recommendation to council. I'll go ahead and we'll take a vote. Commissioner Norman?
Aye.
Commissioner Salas Ramirez?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrock?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lindberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Connor?
Aye.
With the unanimous vote of aye, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, our next agenda item is the preliminary plat of Nature Ridge 3rd subdivision at 14th Avenue Northeast and west of 18th Drive Northeast. All right. Um, this is... Um, this is petition by Nature Ridge Properties of Austin. Uh, they have a representative here, if you have any questions. The petitioner is requesting, somebody needs, somebody should, can someone mute? Yeah, maybe mute. We get, here's some paper shuffling, it sounds like. Um, the petitioner is requesting approval of a preliminary plat of Nature Ridge Third Subdivision. Um, so this is the third phase of, I think it's four phases. I'm looking at the developer.
Maybe five.
Maybe five phases. Um, it, it's the, the surrounding last, land uses are, um, north of the property is outside the city limits. Um, west is designated I1 light industrial, south and east are R1 single-family, um, residential. Um, so the plat includes 26 new single-family residential lots. It includes approximately 11 and a half acres. And, um, as noted, a third phase of a multi-phase subdivision plan. Um, the second lot, or the second phase, uh, which was 13 lots, and those are all sold, I believe. Right? Um, that was approved in 2019, so not too long ago. Um, the, so I'm just gonna, there are a lot of you who are new to the planning commission, so I'm actually gonna go through the general provisions of the subdivision regulation. Might take me a little while, but this might orient you a little bit more than just the information that I have here. Um, so land subdivision is the first step in the process of community development. Once land has been divided into streets, blocks, lots and open spaces, a pattern has been established which determines how well community needs for residents, business and industry will be met. It also determines, I'm gonna take this off. To a great extent, how well the community will be able to handle its traffic circulation problems, how well it will be able to meet the demand for home sites and how efficiently and economically it will be able to provide the many services that are required. After land has been subdivided and publicly recorded, it is very difficult and costly to correct defects and deficiencies in subdivision layout and in the facilities provided. In addition, a subdivided area sooner or later becomes a public responsibility. The roads and streets must be maintained and various public services customary to urban areas must be provided. The welfare of the entire community is affected in many important respects. The guidance of land development through subdivision regulations is therefore a matter of public concern. It is in, in the interest of the public, the developer and future owners that subdivisions be conceived and designed and developed in accordance with sound rules and proper minimum standards. These subdivision regulations are designed to provide for harmonious development of subdivided area, for coordinated layout, for the proper arrangement of streets, for adequate and convenient spaces for traffic utilities, recreation, light, air and access for firefighting equipment and for adequate provision of water, drainage, sewer and other sanitary facilities. These regulations shall not apply, uh, to land use only for agricultural purposes. Um, jurisdictional limits, it just would apply to property in the city, um, and then just goes on to talk about recording. And then, then the minimum standards are specifically spelled out in our Chapter 13 of subdivision regulations. And the state provides the general outline for how a plat should be, um, drawn and developed. But the specifics, uh, are from our subdivision regulation. And, um, we got a plat this morning that I would make the focus of our, um, meeting. Um, in looking at the plat, some additional things to consider, um, is our fir, future land use map and our comprehensive plan, um, which designates this area as suburban low-density residential neighborhood, which is defined as, uh, densities that generally range from two to four units. Uh, classified as, uh, let's see, gotta move this. Per acre, um, areas classified as suburban residential will be predominantly single-family detached homes on a half to quarter-acre lots with the potential for some twin homes and other low-density attached homes. Um, overall density between two to five units per acre. Um, housing goals and policies, uh, in the city are to identify the most appropriate locations for development and redevelopment, promote controlled and orderly growth consistent with our comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance, encourage traditional patterns and practices of urban design and preserve Austin's identity and sense of place through quality building, site and infrastructure design. Um, the process that we go through is we, um, so I've got, uh, I was contacted by the developer to, um, let me know that they wanted to move forward with another phase of the subdivision. And then they provide us with a, a plat, a proposed plat. And then we send the plat to, um, various entities like, well, our, our staff. Uh, so our city engineer, stormwater person, myself. We send it to Austin Utilities, we send it to the county engineer, um, we send it to some communications companies, all to review and comment on the plat. Um, and then typically, um, before you get the preliminary plat or the final plat, well, the, for sure, the final plat, but, um, there'll be some, uh, changes made, uh, per city or, um, other entities' requests. In this instance, um, we ask that lots 12 and 15 be five feet wider than the interior lots, um, that the buildable area be shown in lots 20 and 1 due to their irregular shapes. And they did include a plat showing where those buildings would be located. Um, and then 17th Street, uh, was changed to span, um, a neighboring property that's owned by the Port Authority, um, and then to also be, uh, cover part of Nature Ridge, um, to accommodate both properties. Um, changes in the right-of-way and utility easements, um, were made. Um, the utility did include a drawing and I, I think I included that in your backup materials. And there was some change in sidewalk location and other items noted in the civil plans, but that will be hammered out a bit more in the, um, development agreement, which we will be working on, um, when the fin, uh, for approval with the final plat. So we had some recommendations, um, basically that it's, the plat is consistent with our applicable provisions of Chapter 13, um, and could be compatible with the topography and adjacent property. Um, should the planning commission recommend approval of the prelimin, preliminary plat, we just recommend that the following be, uh, conditions uh, before approving the final plat, uh, which would be approval by city staff of changes regarding right-of-way, street location, utility easements and lot widths prior to submission of the final plat, that a development agreement and civil engineering drawings detailing utilities and minimum subdivision standards required for the pending project be submitted along with the final plat, that the final plat shall be submitted and approved within six months of approval of the prelimin, preliminary plat, and that all applicable provisions of the subdivision code and permitting agencies shall be met. Do you have any questions? I can kinda go through these. Well, actually, here, the new drawing is here. This was the latest drawing that we received, which was from this morning, and I emailed that to you, but I'm not sure that everyone got it. And then we have in the materials. Go back to here. The, I think the part that shows the buildable. Oh, here, here's the part that shows the buildable um, area and the two irregularly shaped lots. Does anybody have any questions?
Holly, um, where is the, the road in question that the Port Authority owns part of or owns?
Oh, um, on the west, south, or, yeah, southwest side. Yeah, southwest, uh, it's AutoCAD, southwest corner of Outlet E. So here, I'll just, I'll zoom in a little bit. And I'll, um, let me see, I'll, I'll open up, I think I've got the GIS, uh, let's see, on one of these things. There we go. Oh, wait here. Okay, let me put a map on here. All right, whoops. So can you see where my cursor is?
Yes.
There's that road that's existing, there's like a, is it dirt? Is it like, it's undeveloped, right? It's not?
Well, it's a gravel road.
Gravel?
Township gravel.
Gravel road, yeah. Um, and the Port Authority property is just this location here. And then these properties to the north are in the township, and those are owned privately. And this, the Port Authority property is in the city limits and the Nature Ridge property here is in the city limits. And so this is the area that they're proposing the new subdivision. And I can go back to that here.
All right, thank you.
Yep. So this is where that road is, kinda right in this area, right? I think it's, this is actually Nature Ridge property, so it's probably right in this area. If you overlay that. Let me know if you prefer to look at the aerial or the proposed plat. And this is a preliminary plat, so, um, you know, we, we could still make some changes. Um, we, we hope it's substantially similar to what's here, but there would definitely need to be some approvals from the, the Port Authority if, you know, if we went forward with this particular, um, design. And then this hap, did happen pretty quickly, so we haven't had a meeting with Port Authority at this point. Um, and we'll just keep working on it. I think the developer would like to move it forward as quickly as possible. We're hoping to get a final agreement and plat, uh, put together by June. But we'll see how, see how that goes, I guess. Does anyone have any questions?
Holly, I didn't see the last drawing that was sent. Were there any major changes from the initial packet?
No, it was just that, uh, area, just the right-of-way on the west side of the property. I don't think there was anything else, because the, the second one I had sent you, or the, the most recent, um, was, uh, I think the one with the building shown on it. And that had included most of the changes that we had already, um, discussed, which includes this right-of-way that the utilities had requested. Um, and there've already been some discussions about other, uh, infrastructure and things in the civil, uh, engineering plans, but that's not relevant at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I mean, it's relevant, but it's not on the plat, I guess. We do have the land developer here, if anybody has any questions, um, for him.
If he wants to say anything.
Yep.
Um, maybe I could make some comments. Uh, our group developed about 250 lots in the southwest area of Austin and then decided rightly or wrongly to come over on the east end of Austin where people said you shouldn't ever build. Uh, we did come, uh, we told the council and this planning commission back in 2005, 2006 that we would do a very good job, that this wasn't going to be, uh, hit or miss. We intended to do exactly what we did in the southwest. Uh, we built one house in about 2005, 2006, and it sat empty for about four or five years. Our timing was terrible. Uh, I kid a little bit that you should've told us no back then. Uh, about two, we, we would build a house every year or a year and a half, lose some money on it just to make certain that things are happening. And about 2014, 2015, it changed. Um, Phase 1 was about 35 houses. Uh, that's all built up. There was one lot that was sold a while back that hasn't been, have a house on it, but it's going to have one in the next 30 days. We then went adjacent to the Nature Center with Phase 2, which was 13 lots. It was pretty wet, it was difficult to work with, uh, we didn't make much money, if any. Uh, but those lots are all sold. This western area is a beautiful, up on the hill, uh, trees in the background. We think it's gonna be a delightful, uh, property. We think that we're gonna, uh, get started yet this summer, uh, have buildings going on yet this fall. We have a little bit of a glitch with that 17th Street Northeast. Uh, the city, especially the engineering department, wants us to complete or at least have right-of-way for 17th Street Northeast to go well to the north. Uh, most of us, maybe even the Port Authority, doesn't necessarily wanna do that. But I think that, uh, the city believes that down the road, whether it's three years or 10 years or 15 years, that there could be more development to the north. Uh, back in 2005, I'd have told you that there's no way under the sun that that was gonna happen. Now today, uh, I have a little different attitude. Um, so I, I can't be opposed to it. We, we really don't want it. We would rather have the road end about where, uh, Lot 8 is before the cul-de-sac. Uh, it, it's kind of a bad thing on the cul-de-sac lots to say that, well, maybe there's gonna be a road back there. And I guess I have to try to tell people that there won't be for maybe their lifetime. Um, we are working with the Port Authority, and I did talk with, um, Craig Clark at depth today. We, we didn't realize until about three days ago that they, the city expected us to build it and that we needed to work with the Port Authority on dividing the price. So we, we still need to kinda tie that down, but this should be the final plat just because the city does want that 17th Street Northeast to run to the north. And so, um, I would expect that the only way we're gonna get this approved is to have that running through. And then it's gonna be a matter of sitting down with the Port Authority and dividing up the costs of that 17th Street Northeast. Uh, if you look up in that northwest corner, you have about seven beautiful cul-de-sac lots. Um, up until this time, we haven't really sold lots at market price. Uh, I keep saying it's Austin, Minnesota, I'm not trying to apologize for that, but we've been selling lots for about, oh, maybe 60% of what they would go at Rochester, maybe 50%. And our development costs are probably very similar, other than maybe land's a little cheaper. But we do think that now we're kinda turning the corner. There's going to be some very nice homes in that 300 to $500,000 range up on the northwest corner. But if you go down to the south end, you have some smaller lots, uh, that are gonna be similar to, uh, the west or the east end of Phase 1. Uh, those lots, uh, had homes that were 210, 225,000, although right now those same houses are selling for about 275. I mean, we're, we're seeing a, a real, uh, upturn in, in prices. Uh, there's a little bit of sticker shock when they buy or they're looking at building a new house and somebody's telling them that it's 325 to 350,000. Uh, the, all I can do is tell them that that house that they had, that they thought was 135 is now 225, and interest rates are 3%. So we need to move very quickly. And when I talk about sticker shock, when I came to Austin, Minnesota, the nicest houses in- Austin, Minnesota, the nicest houses in town were somewhere between $47,000 and $79,000, and that was some of the really nice ones out by the country club. You can see that times have changed. We have very good demand. I appreciate the abatement process that the city has taken place. I think that's helped. I think our selling lots at 37,000 to 42,000 didn't hurt anything either, and I'm hoping that now at least one of my partners was saying, are we gonna make any money on this one? So maybe we will, we'll see. We're... none of us are really in this to... this is not our livelihood. We have four gentlemen and two widows that are the group that make up the owners of this development. We work together, we have a lot of fun together. It's been very enjoyable for me, and we're intending to move forward.
And just for your reference, I'm using the 2019 overlay here, so this is obviously not up to date as far as what's been built out there. But the area we're talking about is in this west portion. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
So Paul, just to make sure that we're all clear, the preliminary plat is a time for you to say, this makes sense in the, you know, the traffic patterns and the utilities and what's being proposed, how many units, how many people might live there, that sort of thing, and generally the layout, and to request or suggest changes. And what I hear you saying, Paul, is you're okay with the drawing that she put up, the current... the plat that was provided today?
Yeah, we are.
You have some work to do with the port and others to figure out who's gonna pay for some of that, but you're okay if that's what the drawing looks like?
Yeah, and I would... it would be nice if we didn't have Northeast, 17th Northeast running all the way to the north, but I can recognize why the city, looking at what happens in 10, 15, 20 years, might want to have it. So I'm... yeah, I don't want it, but I recognize that it's gonna be there, and we're gonna... we'll work with the Port Authority, and we'll get a reasonable division of our prices. I'm comfortable, and I'm optimistic that that'll be done.
Okay. And Holly, just to clarify what you said earlier, all the various entities have weighed in on this, and their comments have generally been already addressed in this most recent drawing, so as far as we know, engineering, the utilities, the various tech telecom companies, are all okay with this proceeding as well?
Yes, it looks like everything that we had brought to their attention has been addressed.
So really be just if any commissioners had any thoughts that they had about this, otherwise the hope would be that you would approve the preliminary plat and it would move on to the next stage?
Is the next stage, is it a recommendation to council, or does our approval set the next steps in motion?
It is a recommendation to council, so council will also weigh in with your, you know, knowing that the planning commission has reviewed the matter. And then you'll... and then in June, you'll get a final plat and a development agreement, all of those things that make it official.
Okay.
Or, you know, would then allow them to start selling lots.
If there isn't any questions, would anyone like to entertain a motion?
I think I did include a proposed motion.
Did someone just try to start a comment? If you did, it cut out.
Not I.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to move as presented in front of us.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. A motion's been made by Commissioner Norman and seconded by Commissioner Schrock to approve the most recent preliminary plat of the land north of 14th Avenue Northeast and west of 18th Drive Northeast. I'll go ahead and take a vote. Commissioner Norman?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrock?
Aye.
Commissioner Salas Ramirez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lindberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Klinger?
Aye.
With the unanimous vote of aye, motion carries. Is there any other business that we would like to discuss this evening? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Nothing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. A mission... a motion's been made to adjourn by Commissioner Lutz and seconded by Commissioner Lindberg. Go ahead and do a vote. Commissioner Salas Ramirez?
Aye.
Commissioner Norman?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrock?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lindberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Klinger?
Aye.
With the unanimous vote of aye, motion carries. Have a good evening, thank you.